Are we up?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. Thank you for blessing us with the presence of the people that we work for. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We ask you to continue blessing this country. We thank you for the gift of life. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from September 26, 2023, regular session. Entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we normally have public testimony, but I'm going to skip down for just a second and go to old business, action item number eight. Number one, a proposal for 435-acre development on County Road 4105 and precinct four. We're going to allow everybody, I know there's a lot of people here who want to speak, and we're going to allow you to speak in a second. But I want to tell you that we don't have a formal request from the applicant other than a presentation for a variance to our subdivision rules, which would allow them to put up a bond and some other things so they could start construction and selling lots, which is not the way our rules read. Our rules read that they have to get approval of the court, then they have to go do all the improvements, and once all the improvements are satisfied with the county, then we record the plat and then they can start selling lots. So that's all that's been talked about, and the court has no authority to deny a plat if they meet all the regulations. So we've had a lot of comments, I know, that have said, you know, stop the development. Legally, there's nothing we can do if they meet our guidelines. We don't have zoning out in the county. I know a lot of people have asked us those type of questions. State of Texas does not give us the authority to regulate that. So just for clarity on that, and then Commissioner Harrison, it's in your precinct. Do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I do. Very briefly, my comments are, you know, with what was presented to us and to the public and what's been said, my thought as far as precinct four, and I hope the rest of the court feels the same way, is that any other development that's come in this type of nature in the county, we've asked them, and they have followed the rules and regulations that we've set forth and legislators have set forth for us to follow. And I believe this development needs to be the same way. It needs to follow the subdivision rules that's set forth, and if they do that, then we can take a look at it from there. But from what has been presented, I'm not in favor for it and do not support it. Anybody else got to comment?
Yes, sir, I do, and I appreciate your thoughts on that. I believe that we should not give a variance that they're asking for. We've had that happen in the past, and that's why the rules and regulations were changed so that infrastructure would be done first. I have two examples, and one of them is probably almost about since 2002 or '03, where we allowed people to sell property before infrastructure. Infrastructure never took place. Even as near as two weeks ago, I have people buying lots for $2,000 and $3,000 that they don't know they can't put wells on or correction, they can't have water availability and all this. I strongly believe, like precinct four commissioners, that we should not give a variance and follow the rules like everybody else does. And I thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm under the same opinion. I just feel that puts the county too much liable, and in good faith, I can't, I can't afford to. Now, if you go through all the rules, make all the guidelines, there's nothing we can do about it, but granted a variance, I'm not for that.
Judge, I'm in agreement that we need to stick to our subdivision rules and regulations and the process set forth therein with this project and all others.
Okay. And I feel the same way. So since we can't take action, correct, Daniel? We can't, there's no action to take on this item since we have not had a formal request.
Yeah.
So we'll just, it just will go away until they reapply for something else to come back on the.
If they file a formal application, then that can come back in the same form.
Okay.
But that hasn't been done as required under the subdivision rules.
Okay, all right.
May I ask one question, Judge?
Sure.
How many people are here due to this?
Yeah.
We thank you for being here. We thank you.
We're still going to hear from you. We're not, we're not trying to not allow you to speak. We just, we wanted to make sure everybody was understood where we were at and on this action before we open it up to the public. And all at this time, we'll go back up to public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texans Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some course of response. And I would request, I know there's several here wishing to speak and others wish to speak, if you're saying the same thing for sake of time of everybody, please just say you agree with the previous speaker and pass on your opportunity to speak. But if you wish to speak, you're free to speak. Shannon Manley.
Thank you for allowing me some time to speak, and thank you for the comments that were made earlier. I'm here to share my concerns regarding the Sunbelt development on County Road 4105. I, like many others here today, live on 4105, and I live on land that's been in my family for 100-plus years, and I live just half a mile from this proposed development. This development brings a concern for safety for the residents currently living on this road, and safety should be our number-one priority. As some of you know, this is a very narrow county road with twists and turns. It includes a bridge that floods, decreasing the number of exits when it rains heavily. There are about 40 houses on this road currently. An increase of 200 homes would bring a 500% increase to the number of homes on this road. And this increase means an increase in residents, vehicles, ATVs. It would bring an increase in construction vehicles on this already narrow road, multiple vehicles for each home for each day during construction. The increase in construction traffic decreases the safety and dropability for residents and increases wrecks and injury to those who walk, jog, and bike. Another safety concern is related to the availability of first responders in this area. We currently rely on Campbell Volunteer Fire Department for fire, medical, and related needs. A large increase of residents and houses would increase the number of calls they are responding to, which is going to slow response time. Houses will be close together, increasing the potential for the fast spread of fire. The increase in number of horses and riders will increase the number of calls. We currently rely on the Sheriff's Department. The increase of residents, vehicles, ATVs on the road and on neighboring property lines will increase wrecks, crime, and the need for law enforcement, which is already stretched then. Additionally, the safety of our water source is a concern. Most of this road relies on water wells as their only water source. The increase in construction of homes and septic systems has the potential to contaminate our only water source. Since there is no access to a public water system, those with wells would be left with no water if the source is contaminated. Sunbelt stated, last Commissioners' Court, and I quote, "Believe we talked and sort of confirmed water service with Shady Grove. With the recent 24-hour water disruption in Greenville, can Greenville supply what's needed for Shady Grove for this development?" Sunbelt also stated they have not confirmed power supply. It's concerning that Sunbelt is willing to sell 200 plots without the appropriate infrastructure in place. They are out to make a profit and will happily walk away and leave residents, new and old, and the county to pick up the pieces. I ask the Commissioners' Court to do what's best for the safety of the current residents with longstanding ties to this county. A 500% increase in the number of homes, 200 homes, is too much. Please rethink the 1.5 to 2-acre lot size. Please increase the size of the lots and make the developer do the work to make the infrastructure appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. For a little clarity on some of the comments she made, our rules require that a traffic study will have to be done on that road, so the engineers will have to give us a traffic study according to our subdivision rules and our thoroughfare plan. So that will be looked at, and we will have to follow the guidance of whatever the engineer's report comes up. If it says it's not wide enough, they need to widen it, it'll become their responsibility to take care of that. The water system is a problem. They say they've got approval from Shady Grove. We don't have anything yet, but they will have to have that. They will have to bring sufficient water to their development, which in some cases will benefit some people on the road that either currently doesn't have public water and own wells, they would have access to public water because they would be allowed to be able to tie onto it, too. So there might be a little benefit. I know you don't like it, and I don't blame you. I'm not trying to talk you out of it. I'm just saying there may be some added benefits to the community, too. You might get a better road, you might get, you might get better water. Charles Davidson.
Good morning. Thank you for this time to address you this morning. Hello, I am Charles Davidson. My home is located on 1904, at 1904 County Road 4105. Our property is about a half mile from the proposed housing development in question. I would like to go on record as being adamantly opposed to the 200 or so homes proposed to be built on the land that is so near our home on the same county road. My wife and I purchased our land in 2000, oh, I'm sorry, in 1980. We built our home, and that is where we raised our kids, and they raised their 4H and FFA projects. Never did I believe that in, 43 years later, that our little bit of peaceful country would be threatened by developers. But here we are at that crossroad. This is a weighty problem, a weighty decision before the Commissioners. It is my sincere hope that what we say today will help you to make the right decision on this, as many decisions will have to be made. And you'll be making those decisions for the current property owners and residents and those that love this small rural community for so many, many years. Please let me share a few reasons why I'm opposed to this development at this location. We lost our home to a house fire in 2011. It was a total loss. Even though the Campbell Volunteer Fire Department came and fought bravely, the house could not be saved. We love this rural farm area, so we went back and built our home on the same spot as our previous home. Can our volunteer fire department be asked to take on another 200 homes with all the calls that they're currently getting now? I would say probably not. I've lived there for 43 years. At that time, our road was in horrible shape. It was dangerous to drive on with huge potholes. A couple of years later, like about 1982, '83, our entire road was retopped when Mike Crowell was the fourth of the precinct four commissioner. So that was almost 40 years ago. The next time it was retopped was a year and a half ago. And even since then, we see the trucks go down the road and fill potholes that have already been wrecked by the heat and traffic. What will happen when the heavy construction trucks bringing supply materials and concrete start going down that road? It is a quite narrow road. A concrete truck, few people know this, but a concrete truck, empty, weighs 28,000 pounds. 10 cubic yards of concrete is the normal load. Each of those cubic yards weighs 4,000 pounds. So we will have trucks weighing 66,000 pounds going up and down that road. There is a sign posted on our road that says, "Load limit, 6 tons, not 33 tons." So I can just imagine all of the damage that will be done to this road that we live on. Also, the traffic will not be just heading toward Greenville. It will be heading toward Commerce as well, because all 200 of those homes will be in the Commerce Independent School District, 13 miles away. So there'll be, there'll be traffic both directions, which is a hazard on our road. It's a narrow road, and deep ditches drop off quickly on each side. Most of the residents behind me have probably driven in a ditch before trying to get away from someone driving down the middle of our road because it is not a two-lane road. I've heard about this request about the variance, and I appreciate the comments from each of you saying that you are in opposition to giving a variance. But I'd like to tell you, when we first moved to that property, the postal service didn't like where I put my mailbox. They did not give me a variance. I moved that mailbox three times before they would deliver my mail. If a mailbox is that important, surely 200 homes have to follow the same rules. A variance is nothing more than an exception, and I am proud to hear what each of you said a little while ago, that stick to the rules and make everyone follow them. Please carefully consider our concerns as you make any decisions on these important, on this important matter that affects all of us that are living on or near our road 4105. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Catherine Davidson. Okay. David Meyer.
Good morning.
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 What's up, country people? Yeah, I moved in in 2006, and it's been a sleepy little community, and I think that the 200 homes would totally destroy the whole country thing that we've got going on out there. And I'm worried about crime with 200 more houses being out there. And I agree with the lady in the green, and I live across the street from Charles. And the road, you have to pull off to the ditch just to let one person go by you, never mind extra 200 people, which would be 400 cars. And also, the water issue is a big deal, too. I think that they should really think about selling the ranches off in three to five-acre, like parcels, and everybody wants a ranch nowadays, so that would sell pretty good. But I'm concerned with the crime. You know, I didn't even lock my doors, I don't lock my truck, my motorcycle shed.
You're all on the internet, by the way, so you know, you may not want to advertise that to the world.
And where do you live? Anyway, that's, that's, that's my concern with it, is about the crime coming in, and I just wish that, you know, I'm definitely opposed to the 200 house development. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do have a gun, though, don't you? Say yes.
Clay Woods.
I am Clay Woods. I've got property along with George and Sharon Cronky on 4105, which is actually directly adjacent to this property. So it's, if you go down 4105 and you see a little sign that says Harmony Woods, that's the property we own. And this, this particular development is going to completely surround us on the, so we're directly west of the property. I think everybody has said everything about it succinctly as can be said, and I wanted to support that. But while we're focusing on 4105, I'd like to bring to the court's attention what we have is, appears to be, a large vehicle junkyard that is starting to go up on 4105. Every time I go down the road, there's another piece of large equipment that has been added to the property at 22, I don't know exactly an address, 2200 4105. And they don't seem to be coming, going, they're just coming in, and there's more and more. And I'm told that the individual is buying these properties, so what we're turning into is essentially a graveyard for large equipment. And I'm concerned that we're turning this into a junkyard on 4105 that's going to impact all of the people in this room, and I hope the Commissioners will look at that and find out if there's a way to solve that problem, and thank you for.
We have the same problem with him in several other locations, and we're very much aware of it and trying to do something about it.
Good. Thank you.
You bet. Jeff Thompson. Jerry Thompson, I'm sorry.
I moved in, my place over there, in 1969. I'd just got out of the service, and that's the place I wanted to raise my family. And I raised my family there, and then you've got a lot of folks that move in and move out. And I've been there a long time. I've been there 54 years, and I've seen a lot of people move in and out. And if you put 200 houses on a spot of land, there's going to be a bunch of them moving in and out, and you're not going to be able to keep up with them. You're going to have abandoned houses. There's a project over there right now, one, just down from 118 and Forest Road. He's got 10 houses, spec houses in there, not one of them is sold. There's another place across the railroad track over there. He's got about 200 acres in there. Not one house has been built yet. Not one house has been sold. The market's not in it for people right now because the real, the insurance, now, insurance is going to be high on it anyway, but because there's not a fire department. Campbell is the only fire department we got, and we pay $3 a month to have a fire department. Now, now, I just, I don't see how they're going to be able to live there. And I know the water line's going to be way too level, too small. And we just got that water line put in two years ago, and before that, we had an inch and a half water line for everybody that lived out there. Then you had to take turns getting water, and that's what it's going to be like again. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Randy Snyder.
I just need several clarification points. I heard someone say that they had to have the infrastructure in place before they sell. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That mean widen the road, those type?
If it's required, if the road, if the traffic study requires the road to be widened, they would have to solve that issue before they could start selling lots.
So that means everyone living on 4105 and maybe 4106, intimate domain thing kicks in where they start taking people's property to be able to widen the road, because, I mean, that's, that's all it can be. And some people living on 4105, their houses are fairly close to the road. That's going to be an issue as well, so I'm not sure how that's going to proceed, so.
They'd have to have an engineer tell us what they got to do.
Yeah.
So we can't respond, we don't know. We're like you, they're going to have to meet the requirements that we have to make that road travelable, and however they can design that will be up to them.
Some of us have quite a bit of road frontage, some people don't, but just curious, before anything like that goes forward, and I assume this is the responsibility of developers, is that correct?
Our rules require that if he has over 50 lots, then we can require him to have a traffic study on the roads. Yes, sir.
Do they pay for that, or is that taxpayer?
No, they pay for it.
Okay. And then, I guess my question is, you know, what property value are they going to pay for, you know? So those things, we got to come up later, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak about this subject? No, come to the mic and state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Mark Kruger, and I'm a newcomer out there. I've been.
What's your address, sir?
1337 County Road 4201.
Thank you.
Which is about a quarter of a mile from that ranch we're talking about. And my only concern was the infrastructure, but they've covered very well. And I was just curious, was there, I'm sure there was, was there a study done in the Artist Heights area before those subdivisions were being built?
That all fell under the city of Greenville.
I'm sorry?
That was all under the city of Greenville. We had nothing to do with all that.
Just curious, because they have, I mean, I haven't seen no improvements there, so it's a completely different jurisdiction, though, right?
Right.
Okay. Well, that's it for me.
We have, counties have very little authority. You know, cities can do anything that they really want to do that's not forbidden by law. Counties can only do those things granted to us by law, and the legislature has not given us a lot of authority. And I know a lot of counties, including us, have asked our legislators to propose some zoning for us so that we could control some of these growth patterns and all, and we don't, we don't get anywhere with it. The state does not want us to have that authority. You know, it's, the rural people, we, you know, I live on a farm, too. I've got 120 acres in Shady Grove, spending my family over 100 years. I'm fourth generation, and I understand what everybody's talking about. I, I, I tell everybody, the only thing I own that's not for sale is that farm. And so I get it, you know, as landowners, we don't want anybody around us to do anything that, you know, that affects us, but by the same token, most of us want to do what we want to on our land. So somewhere in there, there's some compromises that need to be made and have to have some understanding. And I, I'm going to go back to the legislature this next time and ask them again, particularly in a fast-growing county like us, we need some zoning, even if it's limited, because we don't have any authority. We get complaints a lot where somebody builds their dream home on 10 acres, and they put in a wrecking yard next door, or they put in some other kind of business next door, a mobile home park or an RV park, and there's not a thing we can do to stop them. And we need some authority, but we just don't have it. So help us get that authority, talk to the legislatures and say, hey, we want this authority, and give it, give that to our county.
My, my main concern was the, the infrastructure, and I didn't hear anybody mention adjoining roads, and that would be a shortcut to 2737.
Right, I understand. Thanks, sir.
Judge, may I say this? We just changed, recently, within the last four years, the rules and regulations that are new. And the reason we did that is to not have people come in, basically buy land and start splitting it up and selling it before the infrastructure was there. So this Commissioners' Court basically has done this in order to try to protect the health and safety of the people. So it was a good thing, and we're trying to go on and abide by those rules.
All right. Mark White. I didn't forget you, Mark.
No, no, no. You had more people to address today. So, good morning, Your Honor, and distinguished Commissioners. Here to give you an update. Trust but verify is a Russian proverb that Ronald Reagan highlighted when discussing nuclear disarmament with Russia during the Cold War era. By adopting a trust and verify approach, Ronald Reagan was trying to strike a balance between trust and accountability. The Friends of Marriage Organization is trying to use that same approach when dealing with the Farmersville City Council, but it's very difficult to even get past the trust part of that. We will continue to put our best foot forward regardless of their lack of responsiveness. As you're aware, we filed two petitions for release of numerous properties in Hunt County from the Farmersville ETJ. To date, those have, there's been no response, even though we were told by the city manager they are processing those as fast as they can. Well, fast as they can is about 45 days, and 45 days will be October the 20th, and those will automatically go into effect. We are very close to filing the final two releases, and they should be done by next week. And again, I expect no response from them. They'll let the 45-day period run, but that's fine. We'll get out of Farmersville ETJ. We'll get out of Farmersville ETJ. Based on the nonresponsiveness of the city council, those first two petitions, we, we're not even going to go back and try and ask them to reverse the annexation of the trail. I think it's just a complete waste of time. Unfortunately, that means we only have one more option and we're reviewing that with our attorney right now. Regarding the request for public information, I can confirm that they will provide no additional documents at this point. They have provided all they're going to and I believe that just bolsters our support in our position that the trail was annexed improperly. And so therefore, improper notices were provided, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I want to end by inviting you all tonight to the Friends of Merritt meeting, Merritt Community Meeting at the Bland Elementary School. We'll have all five Republican candidates for the House District Two position. We're going to have Commissioner Hutchins there and we'll also have Natalie Steines Holt from Congressman Self-Office in attendance tonight. So if you would, you could hear five to 10 minutes of their platform this evening, as well as an update on the Farmersville ETJ incorporation efforts as well. I want to thank you guys again for all you do here again today. I'm just, I've witnessed that you guys are here to help the county and protect our residents and I greatly, greatly appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right, commissioners. Oh, well, you need to come to the mic and give your name and address. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm sure.
Me too, so I feel your pain.
My name is Sherri Michael. We live at 4105, on 2465 4105.
Thank you.
And I've got a couple of questions. If, for some reason, they get the infrastructure in and they start to do what they're talking about and it doesn't work because it's not going to, no horse person is going to want to live on one, two acres and ride around a housing development. It's not going to happen. I was a horse kid, I know. We had 160 acres to run on and that wasn't enough. If it wasn't fenced, it was ours to play on.
I understand.
So what can we do if they go in there after they decide it's not going to work and do something else?
You know, if they haven't filed a plat, Dana, I'll let you address it. That's more of a legal issue.
What are you saying?
If they get the development started and they get halfway through it and they just stop working on it and walk away?
Well, not so much that they stop working on it, but they change their mind and say, well, we can't sell that because horse people don't want one or two acres.
Well, then there's all sorts of things that could potentially happen. It could, I mean, it depends on whether there's purchase money, loans that were given to buy the property. And if they can't make those payments because nobody buys it, then they'll have to figure out internally whether they use other money to pay for that or if it goes into bankruptcy or something like that. Is that what you're asking?
I don't know.
By the way, this is Daniel White. He's our civil attorney for the court.
I'm new to Daniel from working-
Okay, that's fine. I don't know if everybody knows who he is, so I'm going to clarify who he is.
My question is though, can they come back and do something else? Like, okay, we can't sell to horse people, so let's just put houses on an acre or a half acre and see what we can do.
They can do a half acre.
They can't do a half acre. They can come back and do something else, that's correct. But they have to file a plat revision and go through a whole other process. All of that is addressed in our recently adopted, I think about three and a half years ago, we adopted a 275-page subdivision regulation. And so anybody who files a plat and then can't do with it ultimately what they wanted to do in the first place because of economic forces or whatever else, then there's a, there's a whole other section of those rules that says what that person has to do. And so, yes, they can come back and get something different, but that something different would still have to meet the subdivision regulation requirement. So what you're asking about with half-acre lots, that can't happen, not unless they build a whole bunch of different new infrastructure that would be required.
Under our current regulations. Under current regulations.
Under current regulations.
Could happen to one acre?
Um, I believe-
One acre is legal.
Yes.
Yep.
If there's concrete streets.
And they have to have concrete streets, yeah.
One acre septic is horrible.
All right, thank, thank you, ma'am. All right, did I miss anybody else? Ma'am, you want to come forward and?
My daughter tried to get me to sign up, but I said I was afraid I might say something I shouldn't.
Can you, will you state your name and your address, please, ma'am?
I'm Jean Ford, 3155 County Road 4105.
Thank you.
Living on part of the property my granddaughter spoke about. I've been there over 60 years and I hope to live there peacefully the rest of my life. But the, what I wanted to speak about, it was brought up that there is a bridge on that road. And there, that road, at least that end of it, is subject to the runoff into Wolf Creek.
Yeah, it floods quite a bit.
And the ditches are quite deep. And I appreciate my neighbors that give me plenty of room. Because I did slip off in one of those ditches one time. Fortunately, the vehicle that was coming toward me was a wrecker. And, and the fact that the road is narrow also affects the people out there. When you go to turn a corner, you have to be sure no other cars are coming and you can cut across the corner. But you don't do that when you get on a service road or a county, or a farm-to-market road. I did that too one time and it didn't work. Anyway, what I was going to say about the runoff into Wolf Creek keeps cutting those ditches deeper and deeper. And when there's a big rain, they fill up with debris and the county comes and cleans them out. Sometimes they use a backhoe and they take part of the road and then it's narrower too. But they clean them out and then they're that much deeper. If someone tries to enlarge that road, it's going to be quite a job. And I figure the flooding and the rainwater will keep cutting ditches. And some of the areas couldn't be enlarged much or the people could step off of their front porch onto the road.
I understand, ma'am. For the public's information, the county applied for a grant to do a drainage study for the whole county to identify areas of concern of which we might could apply for future grants to have some drainage issues corrected. I think we had six picked out, five or six, studied, identified five or six locations in the county that needed attention and this road is one of them. And we will be applying for a grant from the state that they'll hopefully grant that will give us the money to fix that road, to fix the drainage where you won't be flooded and blocked out of your, your homes when it rains. So we hope that we get that, probably years down the road, but at least we're working on it. So if the state stays to the word and gives grants to fix these, we'll, we'll hopefully get some of them fixed. All right. Yes, sir.
Wayne Stubbs, I live at 2249 FM 2736. I own property in Greenville as well and a couple of issues that were not brought up that I see. I'm a retired insurance agent now, which I do, my business is farming. And I use that road constantly to travel back and forth to my farms over in Campbell and everywhere else. That road is already very dangerous for me to drive my tractors up and down through with big equipment that I take up the entire road. It already puts me at risk to even take that road with the current traffic on it. So yes, I am definitely opposed to this new addition back there. The other issue I see out there, I've lived out there for 47 years, and the guns going off, firearms, all hours of the night, rapid firing, who knows where they're going. I have livestock and everything else. There's nothing we can do about that out there. I understand, it is outside the county limits. There are no gun laws out there. They can shoot and they're welcome to do so. That's going to cause another issue when you get 200 residents living outside the city limits that, we already have that issue now, people moving out there. And I hear it all night long of guns going off everywhere, which I'm always in fear of my livestock dropping dead out there, which I think has already happened throughout the county and other times as well. So I just wanted to bring it up to the commissioner's court. These are two issues that no one has brought up that I would like for y'all to consider as well.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to, the sheriff's come in. I'd like to everybody to know that he's here.
In reference to the gun laws, I just want to say this. And it's hard for us to do it because just-
Come to the mic, Sheriff. Please, sir.
There is a lot of move, people move, well, they're not even moving in, they're just coming in. I'm living it myself. They do not have a burn. It's just a Class C offense. We'll try to get to you, but call. We want to call. It is a Class C offense if, if we can prove that a bullet is crossing a property line. So please, call, because I live it also. Okay?
Thanks, Sheriff. All right.
This is an online comment. For any of y'all looking, you can also email comments into the county. It's at the top of our agenda language with the address. One person did send one email in named Tony Hayden. And it says, hi, I want to express my concerns and opposition toward a multi-home development happening on County Road 4105. Currently, this is being considered on the property known as the Twisted L Ranch. There's no infrastructure to handle this amount of traffic. If you've driven down County Road 4105, you'll know that the road's barely wide enough for two cars to pass. If a larger vehicle, trailer, or farm equipment is involved, both cars have to partially use the ditch to pass. In the case of a wildfire, evacuation could quickly become a disaster with this many people and such a small road. The small bridge over Little Wolf Creek floods and becomes unusable during heavy rains. When the bridge becomes unusable, the alternative roads are even smaller and less developed. Preservation of Greenville's agricultural and wilderness. I hope you'll consider preserving this part of Greenville for ag use as its wilderness. Fewer people buying larger pieces of the Twisted L property would be welcome and those new residences would be able to enjoy it as the country, like the people who currently live there. In the case of a large housing development, the existing residents would no longer enjoy it as a rural living and neither would the new residents moving in. The development of this size would make it difficult for the farmers who move equipment on 4105. I'm writing this on behalf of my family in the community that includes my parents and aunt, a cousin and his family and multiple distant relatives. Thank you, Tony Hayden.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Commissioners, you've got the consent calendar in front of you. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, approval accounts payable.
Make a motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have no line item transfers or budget amendments. Approval payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It stays good, folks. You don't have to leave. Action number one under B, the quarterly report for the Audie Murphy Cotton Museum. Susan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
During this past quarter, visitors to the museum came from 33 different states. And internationally, they came from Spain, Germany, Canada, Ireland, Estonia, Sweden, France, Australia, and England. There was a total of 1,348 paid visitors and a total of 1,480 people actually signed our guestbook during this quarter. Our visitors spent 81 nights in local motels, which included Hampton Inn, Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, Best Western, Express Inn, and Super Eight. Some of our group tours came from Colonial Lodge, from the Play Homeschool Group, and the Lamar Second Grade all came out as well. Our lunch break speakers, presenters this quarter, in August, Tom Hutton spoke about his new book, Hitler's Maladies. And in September, Everett DeWolf talked about his experiences as a navigator on Air Force One during 9/11. Fascinating talk, definitely. Both of them were. In July, the museum had its 15th Annual Summer Camp program that is geared towards six-to-10 year olds. This year's theme was Camp Kilroy and they made arts and crafts, played games, and sang songs related to World War II era. In August, Lou Ann Price was the entertainment at the 17th Annual Heritage Dinner. We also had our Muncie at the Museum event in September. And we did programs for the Franklin County Genealogy Club, the Grayson County Genealogy Club, the Lions Club, and Noon Rotary. For our movie nights, we showed Maun Paquette at the Fair starring Percy Kilbride and Marjorie Maine, and Pirates of the Prairie starring Tim Holt, and Search for Danger starring John Colbert. And we also installed a new temporary exhibit on, of all the First Ladies. That's all I had for today. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Susan. Entertained a motion for approval of the report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number two, the Treasurer's Monthly Report for August 2023. Brittany?
Good morning. In your package, you will have the Treasurer's Report for August 2023. We have a month-end balance as of 8/31/2023 of $66,389,930.66. That is cash on hand and invested funds. All of the bank reconciliations have been completed and agree with the auditor's general ledger. I did highlight on the first page of the report, in yellow, you can see what the court approved in August of the $15 million from general operating funds into capital improvement funds. I did an inter-account transfer. We had capital improvement and general operating in logic. I just moved the $15 million inter-account from Logic GO to Logic Capital Improvement. And you'll see those changes affected on the report. Also, I'll just add, I know that it's October the 10th and we're looking at an August report. It's kind of our slow part of the year as our state year ended 8/31. So the auditors had a little additional time to close out the end of year for the states that ended 8/31. The same will go for September, you may not see me again for September until December, just so you know. It's still there. We're still getting ready to close out everything. So just in, if anybody wonders, I'm, I'm still there, still monitoring everything, but September may not come until December.
We'll come down and check on you.
Yes.
All right, commissioners, you got any questions? Entertained a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. Action item number three, presentation from Capital Asset Resources, Kevin Wimpel. Does he have a, Kevin, you need a slide, you going to have any slides or anything?
Yeah, I've got a thumb drive.
You got a thumb drive? Okay. Jessica can set you up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Stolwall County Commissioners, Hunt County, for allowing me to come today and give a short presentation. I'll take a few minutes and kind of run through this real quick. I just want to introduce myself. My name's Kevin- My name's Kevin Wimpel. I work for Capital Asset Resources. Uh, we have our corporate office in South Lake, Texas. We also have an office in Lubbock, and we do have, uh, other, uh, people work in Houston and other different cities, Midland. But we are a, uh, a commercial leasing, uh, financing company. We, uh, deal with the equipment, heavy equipment, uh, vehicles, trucks, trailers. Uh, basically cover all industries. Uh, what I presented there, you've got a folder there. It's kind of a short, well, PowerPoint presentation. Uh, Capital Asset Resources was founded in 2011 by Carl Wilson. Uh, Carl Wilson was a, uh, worked in the car industry for twenty-eight years. He was a CEO, president, over, he was looked, oversaw twenty-seven dealerships in West Texas and South Texas. And, uh, he retired back in two thousand nine, thinking that he was going to retire. And he, uh, came out of retirement, he felt the need to help people and, uh, specifically small business owners and municipalities and people that are trying to grow their business. And he, uh, started this company in 2011. Um, and basically, uh, our team consists of, we're on a rapid growth, uh, on this. If you go to the next screen, uh, we're actually up to twenty-eight, uh, employees right now. And we've done, uh, basically, uh, currently we've done over about six hundred million, uh, in business since our inception, since we started. Um, but we, we do everything for the clients. Uh, we help them whenever they needed. Uh, we do, uh, we help them on procurement. Uh, we can help them on, uh, maximize their cash flows. Our, uh, we have a lot of flexibility with our leasing program. Uh, we don't require any money out of pocket. Uh, and you get right into, uh, the benefits, the tax benefits with it. And we, uh, we actually help them, uh, grow their business as they need. And, um, if you go to the next, next, uh, slide there, uh, why clients lease, it's, uh, like I said, it's basically, uh, you know, you don't tie up your cash. Uh, improves cash forecasting, helps the equipment upgrades.
You go one more slide.
Yep, one more slide right there.
Very good.
Yeah, uh, immediate need, we can help, uh, critical piece of equipment right away. Tax deductions, interim options. Uh, go to the next one, why does CARP provide your client? What does CARP provide your client? Hundred percent financing, creative customized lease structures to fix, to fit your needs. We don't have any restrictions, no prepayment, no down payment, uh, off-balance-sheet financing. Uh, we can do, we can, you know, residuals are based on asset being leased, and we provide equipment financing for all types of customers and all types of equipment, both new and used. Other perks, if you go to the next one, uh, as I said earlier, we can help on procurement, equipment disposal, expense planning, delivery options. We have experienced team, flexible solutions, fast approvals, new and used equipment startups. Go to the next slide, as I mentioned earlier, financing, flexible terms. We save you money, efficient approval, equity earned, no prepayment penalty, tax, uh, we benefit on tax deductions, auto payments and interim options. As I mentioned earlier, preferred industries, we do a lot of business in oil and gas, farming agricultural, construction, and heavy equipment manufacturing. We do medical equipment, healthcare. We do businesses, restaurant equipment. We do fleet vehicles, aviation, marine. Um, if you go to the next one, we've, this, uh, this was done a couple of months ago. We're actually over six hundred million in gross leases with about fifty-one hundred leases. Our average term's about thirty-eight months. Uh, we have, uh, current active gross leases are closer to about, uh, three hundred million to date. Uh, you can skip that, go to the next one with the questions there. That's some of the questions we have, but a little more, I'm just kind of going pretty quick through there. Uh, once we get a client to come on, that comes and does the lease, we average eight point seven leases with our clients. So, they really like what we, we help. We help them with time. They don't have to worry about it. They can kind of focus on their operations and do what they need to. Uh, but we're all relationship-driven. We do not advertise, we do not market, we strictly, it's all relationship-driven. We deal with the client on a personal level. Uh, we help them through from the very beginning of the lease, during the lease, to the end of the lease. Uh, you have a lot of, a lot of options. Flexibility is, is, is key on our leases, unlike the standard leases that people are accustomed to. And we can customize, and what I kind of call is creative financing. We can kind of fit the best need for our clients. Uh, we do, uh, we, we do a lot of, a lot of, uh, leases with, uh, people that are, you know, small businesses that are needing to keep their cash, uh, for whatever reason, for a rainy day, or to hire people, or for they can add more equipment to, to what they have currently. So, uh, cash is key. We want our clients to stay in their liquidity and stay in their money. Um, and, uh, but right now, we've got about twenty-five, thirty banks that we deal with relationships-wise. We deal with vendors, and, uh, appreciate your time. I just, I think it's something that we have done some business with municipalities, uh, in the past, in the very beginning stages, and, uh, we're looking to grow that. I mean, currently, in 2023, our rapid growth, we've already done a hundred and fifty-two million the first nine months of this year. And, uh, we're at record growth. Last year, we did a hundred and thirty-eight million in 2022. In 2021, we did sixty million. When we first started the company, we were doing about one to, one to three million a month. Now, we're averaging fifteen, eighteen million a month. Uh, September, we did over twenty-two million. We average about a hundred to a hundred and twenty leases per month. Uh, so you can kind of see our growth is, is really on a rapid growth. People are getting liking, uh, how we structure, uh, our leases, and we, and the options and benefits that our leases provide. So, uh, I want to again, thank you for your time and appreciate, appreciate the opportunity.
You bet, thank you. Y'all got any questions? Commissioners, you got any questions?
Kevin, I know, I believe you've been in contact with our purchasing department. Uh, you know, this is something obviously new to us. Uh, I guess we got it all clear, you got all her questions and concerns answered and stuff, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Action item four, a radio discussion from Trot Communications, Mary?
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I wanted to, uh, come today. I, we submitted a proposal, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, um, in response to working with the Facilities Department in the implementation of the P-25 radio system that's, uh, been going on here for about a year or so. And they had the request, uh, and need for some support in getting the sites upgraded and ready for installation. The project is at that point in time right now where we're transitioning from kind of, um, the early stages of implementation to really getting that construction and upgrades done at the site so that L-3 Harris can come in and, and start installing their equipment, uh, after those sites are ready. Um, the upgrades are, are really associated with getting shelters and generators. Um, but one of the big ones is down in Quineland where there needs to be a tower built. And, uh, so our proposal, uh, was to help, uh, the Facilities Group, uh, put together a, uh, or we would put together a procurement document to go out and get bids for the tower. Um, and then we would also support, um, the contract negotiations from a technical standpoint. Uh, we would help with getting this distributed out to, you know, vendors that we know that do this type of work, and help with, uh, any additional help y'all need with the selection process and contract negotiations with that selected vendor. But also, this proposal extended past that with helping, uh, bridge the gap, the technical gaps between L-3 Harris and facilities, make sure that the sites are built the way they need to be built, with the proper electrical service, the proper grounding, the proper, uh, sized shelters with the proper alarms and things like that. So, this additional scope of work to our current contract would provide all those services, including doing, uh, pre-drawings, um, that they can use to get the foundations for the shelters and the generators in place. Uh, and it would also include as-bills at the end, so you have a representation of exactly what was done at these sites. Um, there's, uh, let's see. I guess it's, uh, five sites in total, um, that there's going to be construction done at. Three of those are leased tower sites, uh, so they're owned by others. One is the, the Cogs Tower that's sitting right next to the Sheriff's Office. And then the last one is the one down in Quineland where the, the new tower's going to be built. Um, we've got FAA approval on that one, so that's, we've jumped, gotten past that hurdle. It'll be a hundred and ninety-foot tower, uh, self-support tower down there in a compound. So, that's, uh, the proposal is just to provide additional engineering and support consulting services to get that procurement, get all that work done, and, and move this project to, uh, completion and cut over for the first responders.
Is that tower in Quineland? Is it being designed where we can put other things on it and maybe potentially lease it out and cover our cost on some other leases we're bringing?
I would absolutely recommend that. Um, as we write that procurement document, and whether it's a, an RFP or if it's an RFQ, we can definitely put that in there so that you can potentially get maybe, and y'all can really decide on that, one or two, or maybe even three additional, um, let's call them carriers, like Verizon, AT&amp;T, maybe even wireless internet service providers, to go in there, lease space. There's plenty of space in the compound. It's a sixty-by-sixty compound, um, that, uh, we went with that just to have extra room for something exactly like that.
Okay.
Um, but, um, yes, absolutely. And all we have to do is just put that in the specifications for, in the procurement, and ask for the tower vendors, I call them, uh, to bid on a tower that can support not only your P-25 equipment, but that additional equipment. And we did that exact same thing for Van Zant County.
Perfect.
And I'm going to be in for tomorrow for that contract.
Okay, good. Well, that's, that's good news. Of course, our, I guess our facility, our buildings that we'll be placing there, they'll just be for our use only. If anybody else came in, they'd have to do their own.
That's what I would recommend because, um, you know, you've got your, your, uh, public safety radio system in there, and, you know, if you start leasing space inside the shelter, you kind of can't control who's in there.
Right.
Um, but as far as the compound itself, um, you know, wide open, and you're right, it is a way to offset some, you know, maintenance costs for the radio system or whatever y'all want to use it for, right?
Right.
But that is, um, for sure, a, uh, can be designed into the tower. And we can actually do it a couple of different ways. We can say, you know, what is the design of the tower? What would be the cost just to support your equipment? And then what would it be extra to support the other equipment? And you can make that decision whether it's worth spending that additional money.
Perfect, that'd be great.
Would there be enough, would there be enough to add another building besides ours that, that we have?
Absolutely.
Goodness.
Absolutely. Um, and, and the, that sixty-by-sixty compound, really, all y'all will be putting in there is probably a shelter that's, uh, twelve-by-twenty, um, and then a, a generator. And so, the whole rest of the compound would be available. The tower, uh, a hundred and ninety-foot self-support tower is probably going to have a face width of about twenty feet at the base, and it's triangular, so that'll take up, you know, that'll sit in the middle of the compound, but you can put equipment all around it.
Goodness.
Absolutely. And a lot of these carriers put outdoor equipment these days, and it's really small. So, um, you know, it takes up less space than what you guys are looking for.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? No, I entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Action item number five, per Attorney General Guidelines' request for the County Auditor's Office to conduct the audit of the Fiscal Year 2023, Chapter Fifty-Nine State Asset Forfeiture Report from the Hunt County Constable's Office, Precinct Four. Entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, the Just Appraised Service Agreement, uh, with the Hunt County Clerk. This is an auto-indexing platform for Property Department to increase accuracy and efficiency. Becky, you got any comments, sir?
Commissioners, this is a, uh, auto-indexing platform to help me increase accuracy and efficiency. Um, it is an AI-driven program. This company just appraised, this is who, um, the appraisal district is using as well. Um, this system will free up my Property Department personnel to attend to other crucial needs in the office and free up time to work in our archives, preparing for the physical movement of those records and cabinets that we will need to move to the new, uh, facility.
Okay. Commissioners, you got any questions? Where, where are we paying this out of? Is that your budget or is it coming out of?
This is out of my Fund Eighty-One. It's the Real Property Technology Budget.
Perfect, okay.
How much is it?
It is, uh, fifty thousand dollars yearly, and there is an eight thousand five hundred dollar implementation fee.
Thank you.
But it's not coming out of the taxpayer-funded budget? Fund Eighty-One's not taxpayers. All right, uh, entertain a motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item number seven, nominees for the Hunt County Appraisal District Board of Directors for Twenty-four, Twenty-Six. Uh, Commissioners, the state changed the way the Hunt County Board will function going forward. And they have set it up now that the law have nine members. Five members will be appointed by the taxing units like we've always done. The taxing of, all the tax districts, school districts, county schools, cities, special utility districts, uh, can vote, uh, for board members. Uh, used to, we voted for the whole board. Now, we get five appointees. Three members will be elected at a general election. The first one will be held in May of twenty-four, and then the tax assessor-collector, uh, as an ex-official member. Um, so, I recommend that, uh, I've talked to, uh, some that are still wanting to serve, and I'd recommend for now that we, we nominate Tyson Cox, Jim Bob Grove, Paul Painter, and Steve Stone, and let's see, how many, one, two? Yeah, Steve Stone and Mike Taylor. There'll be five. I recommend we, uh, we nominate them now, we'll vote later, so we're not voting on any one. But those are current members, and they want to continue to serve. Howard Wine, as I understand, has already been nominated by the City of Greenville. And Mitch Moore is not going to be on the board, does not want to serve on the board any longer. So, we can nominate these five to make sure that, that they get nominated, and then we can, at a later date, we'll be voting on, uh, members.
You say Howard is possibly covered by Greenville?
He's already covered by Greenville.
Goodness, thank you.
And we can only do five. So, I checked, and he's, Greenville's nominating him, so, and he still wants to serve. All right, uh, entertain a motion to approve, uh, the nomination of Tyson Cox, Jim Bob Grove, Paul Painter, Steve Stone, and Mike Taylor.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eight, construction management of the P-25 radio project. Commissioners, you have a proposal from, um, LB Vestal. Uh, she is the person that assisted us and did a great job over at the Exchange Building when we were doing the, uh, leasehold improvements. Uh, the P-25 project has gotten to be, and gonna be for quite a while, a pretty involved project in facilities. It's just, doesn't have the staffing to really handle it in a proper manner for us. And, uh, I'd recommend that we approve this contract for her. It's basically- It's basically the same, it is the same as she did. She was working part-time, by the hour, to help us assist, or help assist Chris in getting that project finished. So, I entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Gee, may I bring this up? She does a very good job in reference to assisting over there. Appreciate her in reference to what she did.
She's very good. I've worked with her for over 30 years, and she's done every kind of construction in her area. One thing I'll point out is...
Come up to the mic, Chris, so the public can hear.
Please, thank you.
I'm trying to do this without a mic. She's done what she's going to do for us for 30 years. She's been on giant projects of all kinds. But one of the reasons that I really want her to be there is none of these, or most of these towers are not in city limits, and therefore, they won't be inspected by any city inspector. And we've got 13 categories of construction that are going to take place out there, and she needs to be out there to make sure that, to make sure that the concrete and all meets the specifications for it, all the underground electrical work is in the right place and properly compacted and all that kind of thing. So, she'll be, I'm thinking about halftime for us once things are all rolling, but it'll help allow me to work on the jail project and the Maryuput and Hill project and hundreds of others we've...
And all the other problems in the building.
Yeah.
Judge, will we receive reports from Ms. Vestal?
Sure, we'll get updates.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Action item number nine, funding assistance to Fish, Hunt County Shared Ministries. Commissioners, we've had a presentation last week, and they were requesting $250,000 in assistance stating that they've had, it's really kind of shocking to me that there really is more needs today than there was during COVID, and there's lots and lots of people that are going hungry and getting utilities turned off, and their demands are pretty high. And they requested 250,000. I would probably be inclined to say, let's do half of it now, and then if, get a report and see if maybe things change, and if they need some more later, we can, we can do that at a later date. But I would recommend we give $125,000 out of the ARPA funds that we hold, the part that is restricted. This is a use under the restricted money in the ARPA funds. So, I'd make a motion that we approve $125,000 of funding to Fish out of the ARPA funds.
Second.
I made a motion, so, I tricked you on that one. I actually made a motion. Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, funding assistance to Scrip, senior centers, resource, and public transit. Commissioners, we talked about this last week, or two weeks ago, I guess. Scrip delivers 20, they prepare and deliver about 2,400 meals a week to, to our elderly. And in the process of making their food, they have two steamers. I don't know what they look like, but that's how they produce all that food. One of the steamers went down, and they cost 25 grand. And then they also had a, a air conditioner go out, or it was, it was broken. At first, they thought they were going to have to replace it, but they're able to repair it for $7,500. So, I recommend that, I'll make a motion that we give Scrip $35,000 out of the ARPA funding, out of the restricted portion of ARPA funding, so that we can cover the cost for them.
Your Honor, I appreciate, I appreciate you, and I will second that, but I would like to say, these people do a lot of good for Hunt County. Basically, you have your transportation aspect, we have meals all, all over the county, even in the southern part of the county.
They have activities for them all during the week so that they can get out of the house and come and interact with the public. It's, it's a great deal.
It is very good, and they've been around a long time. In fact, I was on the board back in 2002.
Yeah.
But I do second that motion.
Okay. Anybody else? Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which would be in the right-of-way of Riverside Drive and Precinct 3.
Motion allowed to be done with a normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 12, upgrade of approximately 3,717 feet of County Road 1141 from Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct 1 at County's expense.
Should we approve this upgrade, Judge?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 13, upgrade of approximately 5,060 feet of County Road 2146 from Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct 1 at County's expense.
Make a motion, will we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 14, widening the road six feet for approximately 332 feet of County Road 2232 of Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct 2, money is in escrow.
Make a motion, will we approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 15, renaming of a section, a section of Live Happy Lane, a previously named private drive on property ID number 28929 to Freedom Lane in Precinct 3. It will not be maintained by Hunt County. Entertain, this for 911 purposes, I think, right? Yeah. Entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 16, making the street names in the Los Cablos, manufactured home park officially in Precinct 4. This addition is in the ETJ of Greenville off Forester, and is approved by the city of Greenville without street names on the plat. These streets will be, will not be maintained by Hunt County, but again, this will be for 911 addressing that we're required to do, and I think this is the project, one of the gentlemen referred to earlier in the meeting, that was developed there off Forester Street and along the railroad track. Entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 17, the final plat of Fielding Addition in Precinct 2. Brian?
Oh, pretty, pretty simple plat on 1565, meets all the subdivision requirements.
All right, entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 18, the final plat of Hernandez Estates in Precinct 3.
This is, this one has some septic issues that they are going to have to take care of before the plat can be finalized. They have been in touch with the health department already, and they're in the process of getting them fixed. I would recommend a conditional approval, waiting on their new septic permits and a septic, to be fair.
Is it two lots?
One lot.
One lot, okay. All right, any questions? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to approve Hernandez Estates in Precinct 3 with the stipulation that they get a permit from the health department for a septic system.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 19, the final plat of Charles Lear Addition in Precinct 4.
Uh, this is a simple one-lot plat, meets all the subdivision requirements.
Entertain a motion for approval.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Gentlemen?
Daniel, anybody else on the line?
No, there's none.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items 1 through 5.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 1119.
I thought so.
What was that?
She said, "I thought so."
We're up. Alrighty, it's 12:37. We're back in regular session. Is there anything else before the court today? Being known, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 12:37. Thank y'all.